If anybody didn't notice, please turn off or silence your cell phones. And I will call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, August 19th, 2015. If you'll stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought we had a proclamation, but I guess not, apparently.
Those are for a couple of months coming up.
Oh, okay, alright. So, we'll move on to citizen comments. I have three, apparently. First up is former Commissioner Betty Mum. I'll remind you, you have three minutes.
Oh, my God. You're really putting me under the gun, aren't you? Don't start the timer yet, okay?
That's because you're going to announce yourself first.
Oh, I'm going to announce myself. Okay, I'm Betty Mum. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. And you're not going to start it yet, yes, she is. So, I am here tonight to let you guys know that I'm very proud of our Oregon City Police Department. For those of you who didn't know, we had an operation chill today, starting July 30th, and they were giving out coupons, catching kids do good things. Instead of giving them a ticket, they gave them a Slurpee. So, they could go to get a Slurpee, and I thought that was a wonderful idea. It'd be great for more people, like the school district and stuff, to step up and do, acknowledge good kids doing good things. So, the other thing was Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association had a picnic, and it was a barbecue, and the mayor was there, and flipping dogs. And we had Oregon City Police Car there. He was available. They were not on a call. And the Fire Department, Clackamas County, was there. It was our very first neighborhood barbecue. Our neighborhood has not been real strong, so it was a great opportunity to get people together, to meet our neighbors. And I just wanted to say thank you to the police and Clackamas County Fire in public, and let everybody know that there are opportunities for the police and the fire. They just have to contact and fill out the forms and get on the list. And if the police and fire are not on a call, they usually will circle around and give out badges and stuff like that. The kids love that. Also, Oregon City Grocery Outlet, they do a lot for our city, and I want to publicly acknowledge thanking them for donating hot dogs to our barbecue. So, it worked out really well. Everybody had a good time. And the other piece was, I noticed that there was an article in the newspaper. It was under Urban Renewal in Oregon City, written by one of our citizens. And, you know, we live in a public, in the U.S., you can say and do whatever you want, which is pretty cool. But I do want people to know, in the public, that the piece about the police and building that new building and stuff like that, it really is not urban renewal, so it really needs to be separated. And I want people to know that the police have to, it was federally mandated, I believe, to be in a new facility that was seismic sound by 20...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So, you'll be hearing more about the police from me later.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Woo, two seconds. Oh, I went over two seconds.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, now we have Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey. And I guess we have a presentation.
Do you want to receive the handouts?
Yes.
Do you want me to introduce myself?
Please.
Okay, my name is, is it time?
Hmm.
Is it, okay. My name is Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey. I was surprised to hear Tony Conkle tell the Planning Commission in June that the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, remanded by Luba, would be readopted rather than revised and adopted. The City Commission never decided in favor of a simple readoption. In 2002 and 2004, the city and Metro said more industrial land was needed in the city. The concept plan only yielded 55 industrial acres of the 308 industrial acres. This low yield was not reported to the City Commission, so they didn't know. The concept plan placed those new industrial acres in the most unbuildable dissected part of the site, which you can see up at the top is the most dissected part. Luba remanded the concept plan protect, for it not protecting industrial lands. Oregon City continues to need industrial lands because of its low job-to-housing ratio and the many citizens commuting, and also the need for business taxes. In response to the remand, the City Commission never decided to have Metro shrink the city's industrial land on Metro's map, making it residential. See Attachment D. That was done behind the scenes by Tony Conkle and Metro staff. A transcript of a 2010 meeting shows the commission did not make the decision and were not informed. By false answers and vagueness, Tony prevented the commission from learning what was being finished. In 2011, the City Commission decided how to proceed. Consideration of the yellow acres and greater cottage manufacturing was decided to be part of the city's remand process. In summarizing the city's decision in 2013, Tony omitted the city's decision to look at cottage manufacturing. That omission continued in last June. It is false that the previous City Commission wanted a simple readoption. Using this land as residential rather than industrial harms the city, which needs the full measure of family wage jobs. It also prevents the industrial land from being located on quality ground. You see that it's up where the land is all dissected, and in that Attachment D, you can see the part that's flat is where it won't be. So, the city really needs your oversight to make sure that the industrial land continues to be considered and that there's an actual reworking of the concept plan.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we can do on Beaver Creek Road that you aren't going to appeal?
I'm talking about some real important reasons, so I think that we should think...
No, I understand that, but that was a fair question to ask, because it seems like anything we do on Beaver Creek Road, you appeal it.
Well, Luba actually agreed that the concept plan violated the law, and when you only yield 55 acres out of 308 acres that you bring in, it just wasn't what Metro had in mind. It violated the law...
But you still haven't answered my question. Is there anything that we can do on Beaver Creek Road that you aren't going to appeal?
If you stop violating the law.
All right, thank you. And Francesca Anton.
Hello, I'm Francesca Anton, 123 High Street. I've been in and around Oregon City since 1979, owned a business, successful business here for 12 years, and taught, and I'm still here. I just have a letter to you, I won't take up all your time, about livability and safety issues that I'm seeing in the neighborhood since I retired and in the city, dealing with traffic, invasive species, especially Japanese knotweed. I've included a very good article from Harper's Magazine about Japanese knotweed. There's a lot of misinformation and people who don't, are just not educated about Japanese knotweed. The cost can go into the hundreds of millions of dollars in the U.S. alone. And the last thing is, in the springtime, at the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, we asked Officer Bean if we could have a little more presence on the promenade in the evenings after 10 o'clock. I have a call-in to Officer Claire. I haven't heard from back, but I think it's really important. I get up every morning and clean up the promenade. I've been doing that for two years, and there's, I live on the promenade. I see hundreds of people, children, all kinds of people. I talk to a lot of people. They're getting scared to be there in the evenings. I pick a lot of alcoholic beverage containers, needles, and lately, there's quite a few signs of mental illness activity. So, if we, you know, we have so many tourists, and I don't like to hear people saying they're afraid to walk on the promenade in the evening, so I think that would be a good thing to pay attention to. And the last thing, we've got about 20 volunteers in the McLaughlin Neighborhood who've been meeting once a month, cleaning the promenade, and we've had wonderful help from our new Parks Manager, Jonathan Waverly, and we just want to really thank him for working with us to help make the promenade more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca. And apparently Bob Mahoney snuck something in while nobody was looking.
Bob Mahoney, I live in Oregon City, also serve on the Planning Commission. Tap. I'm getting a little concerned about this idea that Tony Conkle can slip anything by me. He's not going to do it. He's not going to slip anything by you. We don't pay him to slip things by people. We pay him to be professional, and he is, as well you know. So, anyway, I'm saying this for the record. There's no way, in a public process, where you have public meetings and public overview, the staff is going to slip anything by anybody. And if they do, shame on you for letting them do it, because you're the last word. You pass ordinances, you review these reports, and you ask questions. So, people that get up here and lackadaisically accuse Tony, or anybody on the staff, of slipping anything by this commission, or any of the committees that review these things, had better think twice, because they insult, they insult my intelligence as well. I'm not going to let anything slip by you. So, just keep that in mind.
Thanks for your support, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, that takes care of citizen comments, I believe, unless there's somebody else in the audience. Last chance. Okay, so moving on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. See, Mr. Shaw's been moving him down, down the line a ways.
Yeah, that's okay.
For those of you in the audience, the computer monitor at that station has died, so that's why...
Yeah, several times it's died.
It's not because we don't like Mr. Shaw. So, next, we have public hearings. First one, 15-4-15-471, the ordinance for introduction number 151010, amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 2.30, Citizen Involvement Committee, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening commissioners. Presenting tonight, for your consideration, proposed first reading of the ordinance would should add a new chapter to the Oregon City Municipal Code addressing the Citizen Involvement Committee. We've had a Citizen Involvement Commission in Oregon City, which was originally intended and set up to provide an avenue for the citizen and public agency involvement in the land use decision-making process for Oregon City. It was not codified in our code. It was set up through our comprehensive plan, and bylaws were created that governed that body. At the goal-setting session earlier this year with the City Commission, there was discussion of codifying the CIC and what options we would have available to us. My staff and myself worked with the members of the CIC in taking their bylaws and turning that into, into code. We had several meetings with the CIC as we worked on drafts of that code language. We also held two work sessions with the City Commission to review the status and the process and the product that was being created. We were able to advance that out of the CIC with support for the proposed changes, and at this point, we are requesting approval of the first reading of that CIC code. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I think we've talked about it a lot. I move to approve the ordinance for introduction amendments to Oregon City Municipal Code, adding in the Citizen Involvement Committee.
Second. Is there any discussion? Oh, no, Mr. Kavizman, sorry.
It is a public hearing scheduled for this, so you might open it up.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this subject? Then I will close the public hearing. Mr. Kavizman.
Ordinance number 15-1010, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City adopting Chapter 2.30, Citizen Involvement Committee of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Next, under General Business, we have 15-474, personal service agreement with DECA Architecture, Inc. for the 2015 Public Works Operations Center Master Plan Update. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for taking the time. We brought this to you at the last City Commission meeting, and it was, there was an issue that was raised by, by the McLaughlin Neighborhood. I don't know if Jesse Buss, representative himself, is part of the McLaughlin Neighborhood, but we've seen correspondence such that I think he's working with the McLaughlin Neighborhood on an issue with regard to designation of the Public Works Upper Yard as something that was designated as park property and should remain designated and protected under your charter. So, that's why we brought it back. Keep in mind, this item is about a contract, though, a professional service contract for $92,683 with a room by the name of DECA. We've used DECA in the past to complete our prior master plan, our approved master plan. We got that through the Planning and City Commission approval process, but as you recall, it was called up, and we spent years kind of figuring out what happens next. So, we think what happens next is to hire the same consultant to take a second look at the master plan. Things have changed in our department a fair amount since that original master plan was approved, and so we feel like, based on some of the neighborhood concerns we've had, we want to reevaluate, take a look at that site again, see if we can, again, resurrect what we talked about before, and maybe find ourselves with a better plan that meets several of the neighborhood's needs and desires. So, that's what this plan is about. I would say that we are awarding this contract with accordance with the AG model rules. Tony Conkle's going to, well, I just want to also say, the research involved in this comprehensive plan designation took a fair amount of energy between our, our City Recorder's Office, our GIS group, our Planning Department. Tony's, Tony's head's been racked a little bit with regard to some of the history of comprehensive planning in Oregon City, but I can't, I can't present it the way he does. So, he's, he's agreed to take on the topic and do a much better job than I would. So, with that, Tony, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. In the staff report that was presented to you, I did prepare a memorandum dated August 12th, 2015, laying out what our charter says about charter parks and the process for how those are created. There are multiple ways that can happen. There's no disagreement about what the charter says concerning the location of where Waterboard Park is described, and I think that we're all in agreement on that. The question is, what happens, would it happen to the property north of Waterboard Park and adjacent to the Armory, what we refer to as the Public Works Upper Yard? And in the research that we've done, we, Mr. Buss submitted two maps. One was a 1975 comp plan map that shows the Upper Yard green. The green designation is Parks, Recreation, and Schools. I was not able to find any ordinance describing the intent or the decision-making that went into that area becoming green. And the map's behind us, so this is the one that was submitted by Mr. Buss from 1975.
It's not much better than what you've already seen, but I'd be happy to bring it up.
The, I do have a map. No ordinance referred to it, but it is, it is dated 1965 with some handwriting in there predating that, where it identifies just adjacent to the Armory Vocational School.
It's dated 1975.
That one, yeah.
He's talking about the 65.
I've got a 65 map that describes a vocational school on that property. Now, could that be the reasoning for parks, schools, and recreational facilities? It certainly could. Once again, I cannot find the documentation that would describe why this was. On this zoning map, you'll notice that there are several other schools that are also designated green. In 1970, it appears is when the charter amendment went in identifying the description of Waterboard Park. At that point, as part of that charter amendment, there was obviously a decision made to create a very descriptive line as to what is Waterboard Park and what is not. We then have this map from 1975. I then have a map up on the wall. It's the left map that you, if you're, if you care to look at it, where it shows the Upper Yard as quasi-public, consistent with the description of the boundary in the charter, and it shows Waterboard Park as a park. We had a comprehensive plan that we relied on in Oregon City that was created in 1982. That was our document for over 20 years. In 2002, we began a comprehensive plan update. We wrote, rewrote the entire comprehensive plan, new zoning code, new zoning map, new comp plan map. That was adopted by ordinance, and on that map, the Upper Yard was given a park designation. We realized that there were multiple changes that we were making, and so what we did is we set up a six-month review of that initial decision. And so, later, in 2004, we went through and made corrected errors, Scrivener's errors, cross-referencing that did not occur, and at that point, the map was changed for the Upper Yard back to quasi-public. In the ordinance that, in 2003, and just had been in part of that process, we found no, and I do not recall, any discussion of making the Upper Yard a charter park, a park that has the same protections afforded to it as identified in the charter for use, sale, sending it to the voters. We also did a search for just ordinances that maybe weren't associated with a comp plan update, or that just may have been done throughout time. We did not find any ordinance that, that talks about, you know, the Upper Yard being designated a park, afforded the protections identified in the charter. You know, those are, those are pretty significant protections, a decision that would be made, and we're just not able to find any just narrative alone in an ordinance that, that made such a change during the timeframe that we're talking here, going back to 1970. I will admit upfront that, you know, putting together this record going back that far is, is difficult, but based on what I see, I just, I don't see that there was clear intent that a commission, over time, ever designated this a park afforded the protections in the charter.
The other thing, a couple little additions. The, we found documentation that, we've, we've owned that and operated as a city shop since 1938, so we've been there 80, 87 years.
Including the Upper Yard?
Including the Upper Yard, yeah. So, I, well, let me, let me retract that. I found 8.3 acres, so yeah, would include, it would include the Upper Yard. So, we've, we've operated in a very long period of time. As far as I know, I don't know of any other time that the city did a search besides what was done back when we did the facilities plan, which would have been around that 2004 period, and then again, more recently in 2010, we did property search. I know of no other time when the city, or even city staff, considered another location that would have somehow influenced either the City Commission or the staff that were working on comprehensive plan changes, to consider a different site for that. So, designating it as a park doesn't make sense to me. So, I think, in Section 43 of the Charter, and I'm just going to read an excerpt here, which is really what we're asking the commission to make the decision on the interpretation concerning this, and Mr. Buss's argument is, you know, it, you know, there is some clarification needed here. A part of the Section 43, addressing additional parks, states, "Real property owned or acquired by the city in other manners may be designated as a park by ordinance." And so, the, the, the argument would be that when we adopted in 2003 the new comprehensive plan, we adopted a park designation on the Upper Yard, and that was done by ordinance. And so, the question is, does the intent, these are things that we can help you, help you talk about, but what was the intent when that was done? By adopting that ordinance in 2003, which made citywide comprehensive plan changes, map changes, did by making this Upper Yard a park, afforded the protections in the, in the charter for a park since it was adopted by ordinance?
So, the question I have is, then, when you went back and changed it, that was done by ordinance as well, right?
Correct, yes.
So, would not the most recent ordinance be the controlling one?
I might weigh in and sort of play the devil's advocate. What I think, what I think you'd hear from, from somebody on the other side would be, once that designation was made, the charter makes clear that the only way that designation can be removed is through a vote of the people, and so that second ordinance was ineffective. So, it really comes down to, in 2003, what did, what did that comprehensive plan map do?
Are we, are you suggesting that, that the designation of that area as a park in the comprehensive plan in 2003 was an error?
It, I can't explain for why it was designated park. I have a, you know, I, I just don't recall and can't find anything as to why it was. I can say that there's nothing in the record, nor do I recall discussions, that we had a discussion that we want to change the Upper Yard from quasi-public to park to make it a charter park.
Well, and I would have to go back to the, you know, we've been operating that as a yard for 87 years, so, you know, if we talk about, if we talk about just general law, if, if, if I have a fence on my, three feet onto my neighbor's property, after a certain amount of time, it doesn't matter anymore. Right?
Adverse possession, I think, is the theory you're talking about. And let me also give you some additional perspective to talk about. One op, one thing, you know, as you indicated, was, was there a Scrivener's error? You know, when you're talking about a comprehensive plan and zoning map that affected the entire city, changed the designations of thousands of properties, you know, could something have slipped through without the intent? That's, that's one aspect of it. Another thing to think about is, what are you doing when you adopt a comprehensive plan? Your, the comprehensive plan looks to the future, and this is our vision of the, the future, you know, 20 years in the fut, 20 years out, at a 30,000-foot level, and is that the type of thing where you actually change the designation and say, yes, we want a park? If you look at the charter, it lists the 10 specific parks pretty, almost by legal description, and is this 30,000-foot land use, comprehensive plan land use map the type of thing that the commission would use to make that type of designation, or would it, would it be in a different format?
So, for instance, if I ask you, okay, so we just built Wesley Lynn Park, right? But it's not listed in the charter. So, do the, does the Chapter 10 stuff in the charter control over Wesley Lynn? Or is that just city property that if we decided to do something else with it, we could?
I think what, and Mr. Archer may have a perspective on this as well, but we've talked about what makes a charter park, and I think Lynn Oak is an area where we're getting into that as well. And what we've kind of said is, a specific ordinance that looks at a park, for example, a Wesley Lynn master plan that's adopted by ordinance, where you're talking about a specific park and say, this is a park, and this is how we're going to, what it's going to look like, that type of ordinance, to me, would, would be much more the type of thing that would designate a park. Ideally, somewhere in that master plan, it says, and we hereby... Ideally, somewhere in that master plan, it says, and we hereby designated as a park protected by the charter, or something like that. But I don't think there's been a history of, of that happening.
There's the other little piece of history that may not mean much, but, you know, I started with the city in 2004. And this was the, at the time, that was this operations center in getting the master plan reviewed, was at the time, believe it or not, it started that early. And we were pretty focused on trying to get DECA to pull together all the pieces of that. I'm certain my predecessor would have directed me differently if that kind of a comprehensive plan change had, had occurred and before even had been discussed.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I only read an excerpt of how additional parks of Chapter 10 are created. It talks about, "Additional parks may be created and land established as parks upon the acceptance by the commission of a gift to the city for park purposes or a dedication of land as a park," which may be Wesley Lynn Park. There was...
Yeah, for example, that, what, what you just said, Tony, and what Bill just was talking about, I think we've just made the, the connection that when we've used certain funds to purchase things specifically for parks that were dedicated to, only for park use, for example, our Parks SDC funds, grants that we've received for those parks, Wesley Lynn is one of them, Glen Oak is another, it's pretty clear the intent of the use of, why we bought that property when we, and those were based on commission actions to, you know, through budgetary actions, through grant applications that you approved and so forth. So that's, we've used that, I think, that logic and that reasoning.
Rod, do you have something?
Just the converse argument would be that the city council in many years past has, has made numerous resolutions and investments and studies in a public facilities plan clearly signaling the intent for the use of the Public Works yard. And we're finding no evidence that there was ever an intention that it be a park.
Okay, then we're gonna have the public comments. So I've got Janine Offit and Terry Stewart.
Hello, I'm Janine Offit. I've lived in the McLaughlin neighborhood nearly 20 years. I figure I've hiked the loop over Waterboard Park about 1,000 times, observing the park in every season and all kinds of weather. It's easy to see why it's been designated a geological hazard area. I'm thankful for the increase in signage concerning the risks. Some of the signs warn of geological hazard area below, some of them indicate rockslide areas. The signs went up just last year in the spring of 2014, when the city closed Waterboard Park temporarily after some boulders crashed down. The Oregonians said concerns over safety and liability prompted the city to close the park. Scott Archer, the community services director, wondered if repairing a road on an unstable slope was a good investment. He said the hill is going to be continuously moving. Coincidence news reported that police put up signs blocking off all entrances to Waterboard Park, which used to serve as a thoroughfare for traffic before mudslides, and geological activity shut it down. That rocky slope is an ancient landslide that shows up on U.S. Geological Survey LiDAR mappings. You don't need to be a geologist to see that it's still moving. There are plenty of trees perched on the basalt cliff edges just ready to give way some sodden winter day, taking down loose boulders with them. Plus, let us not forget that we live in the Cascadia Subduction Zone, and we're overdue for a large earthquake. So I wonder, why are we talking about spending more than $90,000 to further explore and design and promote a plan that would expand the Public Works operation at the base of a very unstable slope? I mean, really, what good is our maintenance equipment if it lies under tons of rock and rubble? Let's be sensible and stop right now. Look, I don't have a problem with Public Works limited presence next to, presence next to Waterboard Park. It makes sense to have a maintenance yard to store some equipment, extra light fixtures, planters, concrete barriers and such. But an expanded newer Public Works facility should be located out of harm's way, don't you think? We all saw what happened in OSA Washington when they ignored simple geological science and built and logged in a geologically hazardous area. What a terrible disaster. The site being considered for the Public Works expansion lies within the geological hazards overlay. Yet the personal services agreement with DECA Architecture does not include a geotechnical investigation or an environmental report. It doesn't cover traffic engineering or studies. Shouldn't these be the starting point in this discussion and the end point? Let's stop pretending that the site is a safe place to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Stewart?
Hi, I'm Terry Stewart, and I live in Oregon City on Fourth Street. And I'm here representing a lot of the neighbors that are in that area of John Adams, including Jesse Bus, who can't be here tonight. We're just so disappointed that this is back again. And, and we had hoped that it had gone away, and apparently it hasn't. But the last, you know, I think again, and, and the last time I was here speaking was about the library and the added traffic and cars and parking and, and just activity in the middle of a residential neighborhood where, you know, maybe nobody wants to hear that the kids play and they ride their bikes and people walk. And we're working really hard to make it a neighborhood. And with Public Works up on John Adams and using that, that street as, as their access, it's going to again increase the traffic in the neighborhood, and it's changing, you know, it's gonna change things. So we're all very concerned, and I know, we had the neighborhood sell this weekend, and I must have had at least 30 or 40 people ask me about this because they're reading it on the neighborhood site. And so that's why I'm here, just to kind of express what other people are saying in the neighborhood, and they're all very concerned. So that's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Stewart. Denise McGriff.
Good evening. I am here as a proxy for Jesse Bus, who unfortunately was called out of town and was unable to be here. And I told him, in one respect, it's not fair, I'm not a lawyer. He did send to you his memo, and he asked me to basically say that he appreciated the work that was done on the August 12 memorandum. But he still is of the belief that the fact that the comprehensive plan has been changed, and even though it no longer shows the fact that the upper yard is not have a park designation, he contends and alleges that it doesn't matter because the changes were not approved by a vote of the people. So in taking our city attorney's devil's advocate position, that the park designation was approved by an ordinance, and then the ordinance was changed. And he, Jesse is contending that going back to the charter, as Mr. Conkell read, that other parks and other properties acquired by the city or owned by the city may be designated as a park by ordinance. It was designated as a park by ordinance in the comprehensive plan in 2003. His, his points are outlined in the lengthy legal document that he submitted to you on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. That is really all he asked me to speak with you about. And while I'm up here, I will speak as myself, as a person, in the fact that in my discussions with Mr. Lewis, we understand, I understand that we are going to be going through a process. And I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Shaw, at the last meeting, requested that there be a robust citizen involvement process. That is something that myself and our neighbors, we are anticipating that. We, I will say that we will do our very best to work with John on this. We may not always agree, but we fully expect that the process will be robust. And fortunately or unfortunately, my contention is, is that the money that's been allocated is probably not going to be enough. So I hope there's a process that it may be amended. There's going to be a lot of discussion about this, and I think people are genuinely interested in having a discussion, which we were unable to have on the previous go-around. Things just sort of happen. So that is what I wanted you to know from me personally. So I don't know if I can really speak to any legal questions that you may have about what Jesse wrote, because again, I am not licensed to practice law in the state of Oregon, nor am I a lawyer. But he wanted me to present that information to you, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Mayor, could I say a couple things? The, yes, thank you.
Only two.
Only two? So first of all, I guess, you know, the, the information, we, Tony and I met with Jesse last week to, has it been last week? Monday, sorry, time flies. So we met with Jesse to kind of go over these results as well and talk through that. And we've met with Denise and Jesse, and we met with Denise on her own, we met with Denise and Damon. We've heard a lot of those concerns about neighborhood buy-in and trying to show the neighborhood that we've done our due diligence. It's fully our intent to get there. I would agree that there's some disagreement on how much, how, how long that process has to last versus how, how, you know, how we can maybe, you know, formulate some of the, the meetings in a way that we gather that input and share some of our outcomes with that. But the thing that, you know, that needs to be kept in mind in this commission has been, you know, they've got concerns about rates, about costs of business, those kind of things. So, you know, just spending $92,000 to update a plan and provide public involvement, I get that's a big ask. But keep in mind that existing site has a, has a significant amount of value, as we found through our, our site searches. So whether it be the value of the raw land, and the value of the SDCs, the value of the phased approach that we could do with this site, those kinds of things are significantly valuable, as we'll, as we'll find as we move through some of our other facilities. Building on an existing site that you own and that you operate from has its advantages. There are some disadvantages, but in this case, I see it as mostly advantages. So we look forward to working with Denise and that group, we, the McLaughlin neighborhood. We, you know, we've, we know a lot of their concerns because we heard a lot of those concerns. I'm sure new ones will come up. But I'm hoping for win-win, really. I want to be a good neighbor, just like you want to be a good neighbor for this neighborhood. So I'm hoping we can get to that.
Thanks, John. So who wants to go first?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. So to kind of address the park situation, it was in 2003, the master plan was, was looked at, and then it was comprehensively adopted. And so there were sweeping changes. So it wasn't a specific change to this area designating a park. It was along with sweeping changes. And then there were mistakes discovered, and they were corrected. And then it was re, it was changed and re-adopted in 2004. Is that correct? So the intent was not for the specific piece of land, it just kind of got caught up in the shuffle with other mistakes. So I'm not sure what that process was when that was done, but obviously there were some things that slipped through. Was it the GIS map? Is that what it was? Things were just shown different? Because it was only shown that on a map, it wasn't shown that in writing, correct?
Not that I've been able to find. It's on, it's on the map.
Okay, so it was, it could have been, one of the mistakes that they found could have been in the mapping.
Based on the, you know, immediate correction within, you know, six, seven months, that's what it does appear to be.
So it was corrected pretty soon. Okay. And then also, I really always appreciate the public comments. They, they help us a lot in kind of direct things and make sure that we look at everything. And I, one of the things that I heard was, we thought this went away, why is it coming back? So I just want to give just a brief, brief little history. So we need a site for Public Works to expand, because it's just the facility, if you've ever been through it, which I actually haven't been through yet, and I, I'm told, because I'm tall, that I'm gonna have to duck in parks.
There's a couple doors, I'm gonna bend my voice.
So I might have to wear a hard hat. But, but we did look for quite some time, and we looked at many, many properties specifically. We looked and looked and looked. In the end, we decided it was most cost-effective to expand and use existing city property, thus not taking any private property off the tax rolls. And we never found a private property that worked. And then, but then, because of public comments with the neighborhood, and this is a very important neighborhood in Oregon City, it's historic, it's extremely important, it's the most involved neighborhood association, hands down, and we have a lot of respect for that. So we need to reevaluate that master plan to address those neighborhood concerns, and have a plan that not only meets the needs of this public facility, but also enhances the neighborhood, taking, taking a defunct Smucker's mill, Old Smucker's, it was used for industry, and giving it a new life. And then the upper yard already is used for that. So I, I think it's important, and the environmental concerns, they will all be addressed?
There was, with the last master plan, there was quite a bit of work that went into looking at the geologic hazards, the traffic, the environmental issues, and we would be doing that again as part of the land use process.
Because that's very important to us. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Well, it's, for me, it's a little bit more, a little rough. Well, I think Rocky has the same thing, and I think Renata does too, because I think you're in the McLaughlin neighborhood, aren't you? So three of us are in the McLaughlin neighborhood here. So we do take that into consideration, I do on a personal basis. But at the end of the day, we have to look at it from the presence of the, of the 33,000 people in the city here, and as, as the taxpayers, because if we had gone out and tried to find another site, we would have had to annex some property, take some property off the tax rolls. That revenue, we kind of depend on in this city, so we have to find replacement revenue. So kind of goes on and on. So, but I do, I do think about the traffic concerns, and I'm hoping we can kind of work those out. I don't know if the secondary roadway in is gonna be, help decrease that traffic and stuff, John. So please keep in mind that we are, we want to be good partners on this project, and that's why I suggested last time that we have a, a good citizen involvement on this, so that at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna be okay with each other, okay? So, and that's what this is gonna do, what we're gonna be looking at here for this personal services agreement. So thank you.
Commissioner Mayleberg?
Yeah, a couple things. I'm looking at the city commission goals. Goal two, address critical facility needs. And goal three, enhance the livability of the community. And I see an opportunity to do both with this property. And the citizen involvement piece that we're talking about now will really help facilitate that discussion. So I think when there's conflict, creative, creative ideas come out of it, and I commend John Lewis for leading that and, and being sensitive to the concerns of the community, that the existing neighborhood, to try and address concerns and, and maybe come up with some solutions that meet both for all the different sides. Secondly, since, Tony, you were involved in the comprehensive plan update, what did they say about public facilities? I mean, seems like there's very little said about parks on this particular site. What did they say about public facilities?
Very little as well, unfortunately. We didn't call out specific locations. It dealt with the library and the city hall primarily during that comprehensive plan update. We didn't go into detail on other facilities, as I was hoping to find.
Okay, good to know.
Commissioner Smith?
Question first. This new, the new master plan that will be presented to us, how far in the future is it looking out in terms of growth for the Public Works site? Do we know that?
Well, from my perspective, you put this kind of investment into a project like that, you, it's a very long life.
How long is that?
So 50 to 75 years. And I can't remember if that's what the planning horizon was or not, but we definitely don't want to build a facility that we're gonna grow out of at that location.
Okay, so I'm going to say some things here. I've never been convinced that this is the right location. I have, I was concerned about it when we talked about it in 2008, 2009. That master plan looked at 15 years out. And I couldn't understand that. I actually went back and looked at it tonight to make sure I was right. It said for, it said, "This study identifies site building needs phasing and costs both immediate, both for the immediate future, five years, as well as for the next 10 years for the entire Public Works Department, including Operations Group, Public Project Group, Code Enforcement Group." So a lot's changed in, in that time. And I understand that in, in terms of... And I understand that in, in terms of, we now have Mount Pleasant, we are now rethinking some of the other facilities' issues. And so I, you know, I, I have conceded that I would like to know more about how that affects this Public Works site. However, I've never been convinced that it's the right site. And I've always, even in our, in our Goals Retreat, you know, was asking for us to continue to look at other sites. I, I guess I, I wanted to know that number because, you know, if it isn't fifty or seventy-five years, then it's pointless. Because fifteen years, when you're looking at, you know, the growth that we expect in this city, you know, we know that, the concern to me hasn't been the park issue. I, I felt confident about the presentation tonight, and I actually do think that that label of school is what turned that, that little piece green on the map. This is something that, you know, we've looked at a lot in other issues. We had Barkley School, we had, I mean, this comes up a lot. So I, I feel, you know, that that's not a hang-up for me. What really, you know, you know, I'm really worried about is when we get to a growth, when we get to having to, to expand, you know, how do we expand on that site? I, I may abstain from this vote because I, I, I think that part of me being able to resolve whether or not that site works is by going through this process. But I also kind of cringe at the fact that we're spending this much money to find out maybe if this is the right site or not, still. I know that a lot of people in the commission are convinced it is the right site and are ready to probably, you know, go forward with it. I'm not. So I, I, I guess that's all I need to say on that.
They voted no.
Huh?
They voted no.
Well, I mean, well, I just explained that. If I vote no, you know, I'm, I'm voting against, you know, finding out the answer to my question.
I, I.
You know, so I.
No, it's my turn.
Okay.
So I get what you're saying, Commissioner Smith. The, the problem I have, and I don't think it's the ideal site either, and I said so, you know, six, seven years ago.
Right.
But when there is nothing else, ideal becomes less important. We've spent four years, and I don't know how much staff time and dollars, looking at every possible piece of property inside the city limits of Oregon City that, that we could find, and nothing was, nothing that we could buy was suitable. So I don't anticipate that in the intervening time, that somehow some big chunk of land has grown inside the city that we don't know about at this point. So the other piece of that is, is that buying dirt is expensive. So if we have to go out and buy a piece of land, what, how much, how much acres are we talking about, Mr. Lewis?
Well, I think our search was anything greater than four acres, but we would love to have five to seven acres, yeah.
Okay.
If we were looking at flat land.
So you're talking at least a couple of million dollars, if not more, just for the land, without any of the infrastructure involved, which increases the costs. So we're left with the fact that this is land that we own. I don't believe it's designated as park. I, I think eighty-seven years of consistent use by the city as city shops or, or land would be fairly convincing to any judge that this is what it is and that somehow that two thousand and three thing was a scrupulous error or just a plain old mistake. And not only the courts, but Luba give us wide latitude to interpret our own ordinances, laws, and, and plans. So I think we're on pretty safe ground that we can say that that piece of the property up there is not part of Waterworld Park. I want us to work together with the neighborhood to find a way to make this work. A lot of the things that you talked about, for instance, code enforcement is no longer under Public Works, it's part of the police department. So, you know, that's a whole section of things. When we've been talking about this over the last couple of months, we anticipate that this, this facility is going to have a much smaller footprint than the original master plan had, correct?
Right, so the other thing besides code enforcement was the engineering group, which is ten or, depending on the season, ten to twelve folks, won't be at the operations center. That was the original plan.
So right now, the only thing that's going to be up there is just Public Works.
As it is today.
Right.
And, and as it will be in fifty to seventy-five years.
And as I understand it, the intention was never to have any, any large-scale equipment up there, right?
Well, actually, the original plan was to have more trucks on the upper yard. As we've talked about over the last couple of years, is there a, is there a kinder, gentler approach to how we manage the vehicles and how we place the building such that we don't have that truck traffic? That before, we were proposing one-way traffic on John Adams, it would have put him down through, kind of the backside of the arm ran down.
Right.
You know, we think now that there's a better plan for that. There was other things. I mean, we had planned a lot of bin storage up there. You know, now we're finding that it might be better to do that in a different site, just because of maneuverability. So fuel storage was another thing. While I still think we need some onsite fuel storage, it doesn't have to be our fueling center in the case of emergency. We do have the Mountain View site as well, which I think is well utilized now, but it could be better. If you remember, there's also a, a plan, a development plan for the Mountain View site. So, you know, I, I think, the approach that I'm taking now is, let's keep our core activities there, let's try to get them into the lower yard as best we can, and minimize the amount of truck traffic on the upper yard. And that was the, by far, the biggest concern that the neighborhoods had. They, you know, geology was a concern, noise was a concern, dust, there were, there were other concerns, the environment was a concern. But, you know, all of that could, can be reduced with a, a smaller, better formulated plan, in my opinion. So that's why I think it's important that we spend ninety-two thousand dollars, I think, I want to say thirty of that is public involvement, I can't remember the exact amount, and then the remainder is architectural services. And if we have to go back and reopen a traffic, traffic plan, because we've, we've done that or another, bring on yet another geologist, we can do that.
So let me, let me say one thing before I get to you, Commissioner Smith. I'm a neighbor at the Mountain View site. We live, I don't know, maybe a block away. And we have yet to have any issues with, you know, anything that goes on there. I mean, you guys are pretty much all done by four o'clock when we get home. So there isn't, you know, I have, we haven't noticed any noise or any other kind of traffic impacts from, from the city's yards up there. I just think that this is going to be the site. The question is how we can work together with the neighborhood to make it work. Because I'm not willing, and I don't think the rest of the commission is willing, with maybe Commissioner Smith in opposition, but I'm not willing to spend another two or three years looking for an imaginary piece of property that we're going to have to spend a lot of money to buy and utilize the funds that we've saved to, to, to build a building. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I, I guess that's a question that I, I don't know. I mean, I honestly don't know. And, and so what you're asking me to agree to tonight is, is it okay to spend ninety-two thousand dollars to find out if this really is a good place to build? Because under the first plan, it wasn't. And I haven't seen anything, I've heard everyone talk about it, and I can, I can guess that it's going to be a smaller footprint, and I can, you know, I can look at the things that we're talking about and understand that that's possible, but I haven't seen it yet. And so if we see this, you know, master plan, and it is, you know, is it worth that ninety-two thousand dollars? And then we find out, you know, well, we're back at the starting place again. And that's what, what worries me a little bit. And since this, we're basically, I, you know, I, I wanted to, I didn't want to put John on the spot, so he said fifty to seventy-five years. What if, do we know that? Is that what they're doing? It's fifty to seventy-five years out, because their last plan was fifteen years. And, you know, I don't want to spend ninety-two thousand dollars on a fifteen-year plan. We're already halfway through the fifteen years that they were talking about when they made it. You know, in fifteen years, we're going to be tearing down historic houses or intruding into a park. So I don't want to, I know that we've looked at all the property, and I agree with everything that's been said, we have looked with every single thing. We've been looking at it for police department, we've been looking at it for Public Works, we've been looking at it for a library. So, you know, the, the arguments about taking, you know, property off the tax rules, the, all the arguments that have been put forward, I agree with. But I'm not ready to put all the eggs in one basket, and I think most of the people in the commission are ready to do that. I still think we should be looking at other sites as we move forward on this. And so I, I, I don't want to vote against this tonight. I'm really torn on it.
Okay.
I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay. I share your concerns, Rocky, with the amount of time that the site would be relevant. And I've seen a lot of ideas come forward for, you know, parking and as far as parking the vehicles and using the, that site and, and other sites, and making sure that the truck traffic is minimized. So I've seen a big shift of thinking, I've seen a scale down, and that's what this master plan is for.
Where have you seen it? I mean, we've, we've talked about, but we've seen it? We've seen it.
Well, I think that's, that's the point, that's the point of having this done, that's building this, see.
It's to get it in writing, it's to get it in writing, Rocky.
Right. And, and, you know, I respect everything you have to say. But the fact is, is that this is the site. So we're using this plan process to get the neighbors together, to get the city together, to get the commission together, to find a plan that's going to work on that site. That's what this money's, that's what this money's for. We don't have another place to go, and we don't have any more time to, to spend another five years trying to find some other place. Commissioner Mangelberg?
And this site has served the city's needs for eighty-seven years, and we're still contemplating investing in it and having it serve the city for many more years to come. So I don't buy the argument that it'll only be good for five or ten years.
Well, this horse, this horse is dead. So I, I, I'm willing to entertain a motion on fifteen dash four seventy-four.
I move approval of fifteen dash four seventy-four personal services agreement with DECA Architecture, Inc. for the 2015 Public Works Operations Center Master Plan Update, CI fifteen dash zero one zero.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Mangelberg, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any further discussion?
The mayor's comments solidified my, my decision on the vote, so I appreciate that.
Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Mangelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, last one.
Sorry, you said that, that horse is about dead, and we've got one last dying gasp that I'd like to discuss with you briefly.
Okay.
Just in terms of the issue about the parkland.
Yes.
As we're talking, trying to figure out a way to make sure that it was dead and doesn't rise back up.
Yes.
Two, three years down the road, we're thinking, bringing a resolution back to you to make that interpretation, and that way we have a definitive statement from the commission, and if somebody wants to take it up, they could do it now, or at some later point, we at least have a, a resolution saying, here's how we interpret the plan. And I, I think that might be useful in terms of if, in fact, there's going to be a problem, we get it out on the table sooner rather than later.
So how does everybody feel about that?
It makes sense to me.
Yes. Okay.
All right, we'll bring that back at your next meeting.
Okay, moving on. Fifteen dash four six six, purchase and sale agreement, property located at Twelfth and Main Street. Woo-hoo! Tax lots two-two E three zero D D oh four eight zero zero and oh four nine zero zero. Mr. Underwood?
Mayor, back June twenty-second of this year, an offer was submitted to us through Colliers International, our commercial broker, for the purchase of Twelfth and Main Street to construct a mixed-use building that would include commercial on the ground level, there would be office on the second level, and residential on the top level overlooking the Willamette River. We're looking at possibly ten to twelve new jobs created with this development, with an estimated two to four additional jobs per year thereafter. The purchase agreement lists the price, asking, or the purchase price of the full amount that we had listed it for, at two hundred and sixty thousand, less five percent of the brokerage fees, so that comes up to two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So with that, we, we did discuss this at an executive session, and there was a consensus to bring this forward, to discuss it, and possibly approve it tonight. So with that, I'll just leave it open for questions.
No, that's a, you know, it's exciting. I, I like the concept of the project. It's, it's exciting to see some housing actually coming in downtown, you know, that'd be a catalyst for other, other owners to do something along those lines. So this is nothing but a positive, as far as I'm concerned.
I just like the fact where it's located at, it's going to give us a whole new perspective of another part of Main Street, and that's going to be a catalyst for the rest of Main Street now, I think, Eric, so.
Eric?
One, one thing that I almost forgot to mention was, and I don't know why, because we've been talking about it all day, but we discovered that this property was part of a project back in nineteen ninety-four that was attached to federal grants. So I, I've never found any deed restrictions or anything in my due diligence looking for this property, this was new to me. And so I think that's kind of a loose end. And so I would recommend, if the commission would agree, would be to approve this purchase and sale agreement tonight, and just know that the staff would be tying, trying to tie up this loose end and make sure it's still not connected to that project. As far as we know now, the project is complete, but we need to just double-check to make sure there's.
What project?
It was the Trolley's Project, or?
It was called the Trolley Project.
The Trolley Project, so.
It looked like this was acquired at the same time as Thirteenth and Main, as well as the purchase of the first trolley, that it looked like about a five hundred and twenty thousand federal grant.
Oh, yeah. I thought you might.
There's another thing that'll never die. It, and it came up very recently, and we just need to make sure that there are no strings attached to those federal grants.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I have one. I'm excited to see this project. As the commission representative on the Main Street Board, we've been looking for ways to, you know, address the north end of town and revitalize that area as well. There's been a lot of concentration on the other part of Main Street. And this certainly would bring mixed use and housing to actually give residence to the new neighborhood association we have down there, will actually have residence now for that. So that, that would be, that would be good, and I think it's, I think it's a good project, and I'm really glad that somebody finally came forward and wants to invest in our city on this site. So I would like to move, if there's no other discussion, for the purchase and sale agreement for a property located at Twelfth and Main Street.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mangelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So we're on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
No.
I did, did have a question about one of them.
Okay.
If that's appropriate. It's about the sewer project on Division Street. A question to Mr. Lewis. What is the traffic mitigation plan for that? It's a pretty busy street, and it's on the way to the hospital. How will you route traffic during construction? It sounds like it's going to be a fairly long construction phase.
Yeah, and that's, particular sewer line's fairly deep, which always adds to the complexity of a project like that. So we have, this is a word of the contract, contractor hasn't disclosed. Contractor hasn't disclosed his plan for traffic control in that area. But this particular contractor has a lot of experience doing this kind of work in other parts for Clean Water Services in Hillsborough, Portland. So we're used to working in tight, constrained areas. But typically, what happens in projects like this is the contractor's required to submit a traffic control plan and we spend a fair amount of time reviewing that traffic control plan and talking it through with them. If there's a situation that we're concerned about, then we...I mean, public safety is our first concern. And if we find a place where we're gonna end up really having an impact, then we work pretty closely with folks like the hospital and the ambulance services and TRIMET and everybody, you know, else that uses that, including signage, like what we've had on O'Malala, notifying people that there's traffic delays. So that's how we work hard to mitigate that. But there definitely are, especially with these projects that are impactful like that and in the street, you know, you don't have too many options. So you just work through it that way.
Thank you.
So somebody wanna move the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mangelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So Communications. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have updates provided by Mr. Lewis concerning the SDC Forum and TRIMET's long-range planning. And then Ms. Cole will provide an update on the library construction project.
Again, thank you. So staff have been working pretty hard with the Chamber of Commerce and some of its members to bring forth a community forum on system development charges. We see it as an educational forum with a high degree of public input. We expect to focus our attention on those who are either developing or have developed or interested in developed, business owners, you know, large property owners. It's probably gonna be a little more focused on commercial than residential. But, you know, a lot of it's based on a unit rate kind of charge. So there'll be a residential aspect as well. We have established a date of September twenty-fourth. We're talking about a three-hour forum. We consider it a slightly longer forum, because it is a pretty big topic. It's kind of complicated. But we also wanted to recognize the time of the business owners that we expect to be there and the developers that we expect to be there. So it'll be from nine to noon. We're talking about doing it at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. It'll be recorded, video-recorded, so that we'll have that going into the future. So when new developers come to town and maybe have similar concerns, we'll be able to share that discussion with them and hopefully educate them on how SDC's come about, particularly in Oregon City. We also expect to see...we've brought on a public involvement person to help facilitate that forum for us. And she brings with her some polling equipment that will give us real-time feedback. So the conversation...you know, meetings like that tend...can get, you know, with someone wanting to express a particular opinion or take you down a particular road, this'll give us some opportunity to kind of manage that a little bit differently than what we have. So...and, you know, I hope, in fact, Mayor, it's been suggested that maybe you help with an introduction, just to kind of establish the importance of this topic to the city and maybe even participate in our thumbnail voting for different questions, those kind of things. But anyway, we can talk more about that. I haven't talked to you about that, so that may be a big ask right now. But so I just wanted to mention that. We're working on agenda and some of the topics. I think Mr. Parna is gonna be one of the guest speakers, so it'll all be worthwhile, if that's the only speaker that you get to hear.
Scintillating.
With that, TRIMET. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about with regard to TRIMET. And Katie, thanks for bringing up the first little map. Just a reminder, September twelfth, the Max Orange Line will be opening. And I know several of us kind of tried to get on to do a demo ride. We didn't actually get to do that. But the Max Orange Line is opening on time on the twelfth. And I think the first service begins at eleven AM on the twelfth. So I'm assuming they're gonna do quite a bit of fanfare down there, but maybe not. Maybe it'll just be business as usual. With the Max Orange Line, they're expecting several buses on this kind of end of the metro region to change. And for Oregon City, I may have mentioned this before, but I'm just gonna re-mention it for the general public. The thirty-three line, which is pretty popular in Oregon City, it pretty much goes to the Community College and into Portland, will change because it will no longer go into Portland. It now will go to the Transit Center in Milwaukee or the end of the Max Line in Milwaukee, the end of the Orange Line. And then at that point, a rider could stay on that particular bus and go to the Clackamas Town Center. And then he'll turn around and do the same thing. So they'll be adding a number of trips to that as well. So if you wanna get to the Clackamas Town Center, that's a way to do it. So that's an important change. The ninety-nine for...which will go into Portland, it'll have a little different route, but it'll go into Portland as well. They're increasing the frequency on that. And also, the Clackamas Heights area, I know that was an area that was underserved and they're expecting to increase frequency on that line as well. So...and then they mentioned frequent service on Sundays. So Sundays, buses will run every fifteen minutes or better most of the day. And the bus that includes, for Oregon City, is Bus Thirty-three. So that'll run, frequent service will run on Sundays as well. And they also mentioned that they're already...they've already...if you use your phone, your smartphone at all, they've already integrated some of these changes to their trip planner. So you should be able to find...all of these are found easily on their website. They've got a lot of good information on the website. So I just wanted to mention that piece about additional busing in Oregon City. They're still working on the southeast corner plan as well. So they're talking about a lot of kind of...I guess for Oregon City, it'd be more north-south. Instead of the wheel-and-spoke model, they're looking at trying to get busing across from Happy Valley to Wilsonville. And so that's kind of in the works. So that's good news. Now, with additional service, apparently comes...what they're proposing at this point is an increase in the employer payroll tax that funds TRIMET service by one percent...one-tenth of one percent. So the rate that's being proposed at this point is...the current rate is point seven-two-three-seven percent would increase to point eight-two-three-seven percent. I didn't have time to figure out what that was in dollar amount, but if it's a percent per thousand, I'm guessing it's not a lot of increase there. So, you know, they have, again, information on this, which is really kind of emphasizing the outreach that they've done to date to try to get, and it's not just in Oregon City, this is across their region, that kind of helps them provide better service as they've heard is needed from the communities. And so, you know, I just...I thought that was important. I think they're looking for public testimony. I know they have a board meeting on September sixteenth. And, you know, I guess if there's something that you would like staff to do with regard to that public testimony, we can do that on behalf of the city. So that's some feedback that you can give me at any time and we'll try to work that in. And then, last thing with regard to...and this isn't just specific to TRIMET. This is for the region. So the map that I'm showing on the board here is...was taken from, really, I think, a 2010 plan. I see 2009 up there. Maybe that was the timeframe. I've always thought that this was a 2010 plan. But anyway, it talks about rapid transit in the region. And TRIMET has obviously completed the Orange Line. They've completed some other lines that were included in the first phase of this plan. Now they're talking about rapid transit in the yellow areas. And, you know, when I started staffing the Transportation Advisory Committee, there was suggestions of rail that came to Oregon City. I'm not sure TRIMET is talking to it in those terms or Metro. They're just starting this conversation, because they're also talking about updating the regional transportation plan. And so I think as the future goes on, I'll give you other updates. But it'd be good for you to be thinking about, maybe sharing with me, what your thoughts or concerns are with regard to regional rapid transit and whether it be more buses or more rail, as it serves Oregon City. Because I'm gonna need to be going to Metro Regional Meetings to kind of help formulate what ends up in that regional plan. So, again, early, this is very early. I understand this process is gonna take several months and probably more than a couple of years. So just wanted to share it with you, because I'm starting to hear that conversation in my level in some of these regional groups. So with that, I'm done.
I'm glad to hear that TRIMET is looking at expanding its service. Having recently driven on I-205, the traffic is getting worse and worse. And anything we can do to provide more options for people to get around faster is gonna be good for our residents.
Anything else? Thank you, Katie.
We have one more.
Well, I was talking about this subject, but go ahead, Mo.
Good evening, Commission. Commissioner Shaw and I have talked about providing you with an update as frequently as twice a month, if that's okay with you. So that you can stay abreast of what's going on with the building project. Thanks. I was wondering how I was gonna do that. So I just brought you a few pictures to...and this is just the renderings, which you've seen. So you know that a temporary wall has been installed in a couple of places in the library. This is the shortened circulation room, which is not too bad. And this is the reference room, which is about one-third of the space it was before. But it's working and it works just fine. Actually, there are some benefits to this layout, which is interesting. Yeah. There's the wall. You can see where it comes very close to the elevator. So it doesn't impact any ADA access or anything. But it's right up there. And I didn't put a slide in for the downstairs, but downstairs, the door is like right next to the elevator, at the bottom of the stairs, the two stairs that go up in the back. The reference librarian is right by the front door. So we're just getting used to this whole new flow of work and traffic patterns and everything. It's very interesting. And since we had no tables available from the reference room, we moved a couple of them out here. So we're even cozier than we were before. And then outside, it is looking completely different. We are living with huge construction trucks and machinery. And this is the other view from the other side. You can't really tell, because it's hard to get the depth perception right. But that's the hole that the stump where the maple tree came out of. Yeah, it left a huge hole.
It's about...yeah, it's about thirty feet across.
So this is some of the planks that they've milled from the elm.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, it's really nice wood. And we've left it really big, because we're not a hundred percent sure what we're gonna do with it. But they milled the elm on-site and took that away. That will be in storage and be dried over the course of the year. We may cut it smaller if we can decide what to use it for in the library. We may cut it smaller so that it dries more quickly. That will save us some time. We have a lot of options. We won't use all of it, though, by any means. So that will be available for other projects in the city.
This picture...that last picture, that'd be a great one to have on the website, 'cause I was kind of following my Facebook feed and there were some people talking about that and saying, well, they think the people that cut down the trees that they're gonna use it for firewood. And I kind of wanted to respond and say, oh, no, no, no. It's going to be, as much as we can, and reused on the site. But I wanted to give them a reason to actually watch a meeting and so I wasn't going to, you know, participate in that dialogue. But this would be a great picture to be...to have on the website, so people can really see what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like beautiful, like we have a lot of really beautiful wood available. There's the stump. Yeah.
And there's a lot of...there's still a lot of Earl wood in that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's...that is almost all gonna be saved. What we learned is that a few of the...well, a little bit of it will have to be trimmed away, because it doesn't...it's not really streets legal. It's too wide. So we can put it on a flatbed and transport it that way. But we...well, actually, some of it get trimmed when it's on the flatbed, so that we don't lose...we lose as little as possible.
Sure.
Right? So what we're working on right now is the...that is not dried. The maple and any of the elm that's in some of the tree limbs that might be used for art, that stuff is done wet, so it's not dried. So we're working with possibly Bendai to store it on his property, which would be really nice, because then, when we get further down the road into the public art project process, then artists could actually go out there and take a look at it. So we're working out all those details. But there's quite a bit of wood that came from the maple, including that huge stump and some of the elm limbs that will be...that will go towards art.
That is great.
And that's...
I did wanna thank Jim Hall, who called me and was concerned about it. And, you know, Jim made this gavel out of the Abernathy Hill. So he was helpful on the site, talking to people and talking about the sizes and what needed to be cut where and all that kind of stuff. And was the one that told us, informed us that especially the maple, that we wanted to keep it wet, because you can't...apparently, it's much more difficult to work the maple when it's dried. So they got...he even brought some sealer down. So they're sealing both ends of those different things to keep it all, to keep the moisture in and to keep it from drying out until we have something to do with it. So I just wanted to give Jim a shout-out, say thanks for his help.
And then I just wanted to mention that every week, we get a new three-week lookout. And, you know, sometimes things change. But the things you can look forward to are, once we get all the tree moved off the site, of course, excavation. They took down the trash enclosure today. So they'll start excavating very soon. And in early September, we should see some concrete going up. So you'll be seeing some structure happen pretty quickly.
I want to mention the time-lapse photo.
And, of course, the time-lapse photo, which is on our website and that I sent to you all, that you can...it takes a picture every five to ten minutes.
That's in the Belfry of the church, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Number fourteen.
Oh, is it every fourteen? So, yeah, since they had been set up to do that for their project, they had it pretty much readily available for our project. It was a very good location for our project.
Well, thank you, Mo, for the update. And the public process continues and lots of people are involved and it takes the village. So I'm glad everybody's working on that wood.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Last update is that a while back, there was a development proposal for live-work units out on Beaver Creek Road up by the high school. The Planning Commission did approve that. It was appealed. City Commission did approve it. It was appealed up to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Just recently, Land Use Board of Appeals did affirm the City Commission decision on that. I believe there's a twenty-one-day or so appeal period.
Right, so we'll know by the end of...end of this month. So your next meeting, we'll know if it's over, if the next round goes on.
That's all that I have for...
I asked the question.
Yes.
So Commissioner Mangelberg, anything for Communications?
I attended the Metro C-4 Subcommittee Meeting a couple of weeks ago, my first one, and it was very interesting, but still getting, learning the ropes. And I'll be working with John Lewis, who will prep me and brief me so that I'm an effective advocate for the city at that meeting.
And remind me, I've got the...I have a Metro pass, parking pass, that you can use when you go to the Impact Meeting.
Thank you.
It says Mayor on it, but you can just... Commissioner Smith?
After the presentation of the Irma Tingler House Strategic Plan, the Friends Group met this week to kind of go back over that. Most of them were at the actual commission meeting, work session. So they shared their support of the plan and definitely felt that it was going in the right track. The Friends Group is now working on going through that strategic plan, specifically looking for how to use some of the appendix of that plan. specifically looking for how to use some of the appendix of that plan. There were some case examples from different houses, so they're, they're looking at the bylaws that they created for the Friends Group of the Ermatingher to see if that, if there's anything that they may have missed with that, and also starting to work on the other list of things that are on there, you know, whether it's collection plan or, or just kind of a wish list of what they want to see for the house and starting to think about fundraising, things like that. So, they, I, I think they will probably come back to the commission within the next month or two with at least some sort of semi-proposal on how they might go about programming the house. Been doing a lot of tourism meetings, and I won't talk in detail about that. Eric was at one of those meetings, and part of it has to do with the restructuring of Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust grants, and, and the other part of it, and that's something that staff has been working on. But the other part of it is a little broader, tourism, citywide kind of thing. So, I think that'll be something that we talk about at September 8th work session.
So, we might be able to shrink those groups down to like 50 or so?
Can you name them all? That should be the test right there, see if you...
I just could, I just figured out how to say the, the regional wastewater capacity, whatever, can you just say? Commissioner Shaw?
Oh, can you hear me down here? Okay, Mayor Holliday. I got to wait for the camera to come over here. All right, so I, I think the library groundbreaking happened since our last meeting, you know, and I... So, I, that was done really well, and Mayor did a great job, and Mo, congratulations on putting that together. That was pretty nice, especially seeing the little kids out there with shovels and stuff, so great job on that. And I think Mayor Holliday will probably talk about Lloyd Goffman and coming into town, so I'll let him do that. Did attend the, what was formerly called the County-City Dinner, just recently, as far as last week was changed to the County-City Appetizers, so... This was in Lake Oswego at the Street of Dreams, so I, I was anticipating something more than some appetizers, but anyway.
Did they let you into the Street of Dreams for free?
Yes. But they gave us this orange band, you know, so we're all kind of walking through the houses with this orange band on. Everybody's wondering, what the heck, these guys are, you know? Anyway...
There was a tracking chip in there.
And I've been meeting with a representative from Gladstone, a representative from West Lynn on Tri-City a little bit, and we just had a meeting today on that. And, and to make sure everybody's aware of, tomorrow night's the last concert in the park, and Johnny Limbo and the Lugnuts, and the Oregon City Optimus Club will be, be serving dinner there tomorrow night.
Not appetizers.
Not appetizers. This is a real barbecue chicken dinner. Ladies, come down and join us, you know? It's not Korean chicken. This is the real thing, so...
Is that it?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Well, I won't be quite as entertaining, but... So, the Optimus are also out at the county fair. As will we are too, with my kids with 4H, and the fair will not be as hot the rest of the week, so... So, come out and see what great things everybody's doing out there. Friday, the 7th, was Parks Day, and Scott and his crew, they were out there at West Lulun Park for the movie to show everybody all the parks in Oregon City and what's going on, and especially the two plans for Glen Oak Park and Filbert Run, thank you, which hasn't, they haven't been officially named yet, so... And then, let's see, the McLaughlin Garage Sales were the 14th through the 16th, and lots of people, lots of people, as always. And my son's going to Case next year, so they had a big garage sale there with all electronic stuff. But it was great to participate in that, just see all the neighbors, and that's all I have.
Okay, well, see, I've had more meetings than I can count on the Tri-Cities thing. So, we're just continuing to work our, our strategy to, to get governance change in Tri-Cities, and I think we're heading in the right direction, and slowly but surely, we're making progress in that. So, I'm happy to, to say that I think we're going to get there eventually, hopefully before my term is up. One of the exciting things that, that we did was, would have been a week ago, last Sunday, a man had been walking the Oregon Trail, the entire length of the Oregon Trail. His name is Lloyd Goffman, out of Ketchikan, Alaska. And I'd been in contact with him and his daughter and his wife over this last couple of months as he was traversing the Oregon portion of the trail. And so, when we finally knew when and where he was going to be in the town, I, I walked the last half mile or so with him, and Chief Band was kind enough to provide a police escort for us so that we were able to kind of give, just, you know, welcome him to Oregon City, and that was, that was pretty exciting. 70-year-old man, three pairs of tennis shoes. I forget, 104 days. 2,250 miles. So, that's quite, quite the thing. I, I, the only other thing I have to say is, for the people out there who have not read the newspaper, you may notice a change in the interim city manager. Mr. Conkell is, is sitting in for David Frazier, who was placed on routine administrative leave late last week. There was a non-criminal complaint against Mr. Frazier. We hired a completely outside firm, Mick Gillette, out of... Former Supreme Court judge. Right, former Supreme Court Justice, former Solicitor General of the State of Oregon, super-qualified guy. We wanted to make sure that this process was fair to Mr. Frazier, as well as showing no signs that the city was attempting to influence the outcome of the investigation in any way. We expect that to take somewhere between two and three weeks, and once we get that back, then the City Commission will have an opportunity to decide if, if, whether or not there is anything there. If there is, then we'll have to decide how we're going to handle it. So, that's as much as I can tell anybody. That's what we told the newspapers. But in case you're out there in TV land and wonder what's going on, that's what's going on. Other than that, I have nothing. We do have a visit from Senator Wyden coming up, a week from Friday? Next Thursday. It's not, it's not a public event, but he is going to be here and we're talking about the, the three key things, the Lion Falls Legacy Project, the locks, and the National Heritage Area Designation. And so, there will be several members of us in the community that have been invited. So, we'll look forward to lobbying them for money for the Lion Falls Legacy Project. With that, I'm done. Is there anything else? Go to your order.
We haven't heard from Mr. Gifford tonight. I, you know...